Well, we'll get started if you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody had a good chance to take a look at the agenda. Any changes? I think number 11, I don't think Sam or Austin is coming. I think Austin would be available by telephone, right?
Yes.
And then number 13, we do not need that. That was on last week's or two weeks ago on that agenda and it just did not get removed. We can get rid of number 13 as well. So with those two changes, I would need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda excluding number 11 and number 13.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we'll move on to number four. Had a chance to approve the minutes of February 6th and 20th, 2023 meetings.
I did not see any things I agree with, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for February 6th and February 20th meetings.
I will second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We'll move on to number five, contract amendment number two, banner engineering with Tanya.
Well, good to see you all this evening. So we've met with some members of council a few weeks ago, but I wanted to take this opportunity to come before the council and to present the amendment before you this evening. And so that amendment is for, oh, thank you so much. Yeah, no problem. I appreciate that. There we go, Cindy. It should be much easier to hear me now.
Can you hear?
Yes. So the amendment really has three parts, and this is for the wastewater treatment and performance. The first part is for the second rebidding services. And really with, the one thing I brought up with this group we met was with this CBG funding that the city was able to go after. The second rebidding would have been needed anyway to go after that re, that money. And the city was able to obtain the additional $750,000 grant by getting or applying for that funding. And so the bidding would have had to occur after the funding was secured. So that's part of the reason too that the second rebid was necessary. So that second rebid comes with the additional cost of rebidding it. There were some additional meetings with C-Cod and the D-A-N-R and the city to discuss that rebid, the need for it, to move forward with it. And then also to incorporate the CDBD documents that have to be part of the bid into those bidding documents. And then there was also the regular things that we have to do when we do a bid, search advertising, issuing plans, inspect the contractors, answering questions, holding the pre-bid meeting. And the bid will occur this Thursday, so hopefully I know for sure one bidder that's bidding, maybe two. Hopefully we'll get good numbers in. So that bidding phase amendment is $17,100. The other two portions of the amendment before you this evening are the construction phase and the construction observation phase. Now, the reason those amendments are before you is because originally the construction phase was planned to occur in '22 and '23. With the delays in bidding, construction is now planned for '23 and '24. So with that delay, you know, every year people get a salary increase. As engineers, we get salary increases, our rates go up to help fund that. And so it's the added labor cost of delaying a year, plus the mileage rate has gone up from 55 cents, the federal mileage rate from 55 cents to 75 cents. And over that two-year period, we have 244 trips planned between Sioux Falls and Alzester. So, and that's for a construction observer that will be here several times a week. We've got survey crews coming down to stake things when we need them from the contractor. The administrative or management side will be coming down for meetings with the contractor to check things, and then other members of the design team will be coming down just to check in on things. Think of like our architect will come down and, you know, set some of the workings for the installations to make sure things look appropriate. So there's quite a few trips. So for the construction administration phase, and that's more kind of overseeing and help manage that construction contract, that amendment is $24,500. For the construction observation phase, that cost is $18,300. So the total amendment request is $59,900. You know, another question I had is will there be any more amendments or is this it? I never have a crystal ball, so I cannot tell, stand up here and say absolutely not, there will not be anymore. But right now, we don't foresee any more. There's no costs, you know, unless construction would go on into 2025 for some unknown reason. Or you would have a contractor that needed additional oversight that wasn't planned that was really struggling and the city wanted to pay for that. Those are the only two things I could think of at this time, but right now that's not anticipated. The other question that was asked is, you know, really, is this project needed? And I think the one absolute on that is yes, this project really is needed. The, there's no redundancy in the radiation basin system. It's overflowed before, and so there's capacity issues. The disinfection room is in dire condition, you know, the, because of the corrosiveness and the age of that, the interior of it, you know, the coating is peeling off the electrical components and most of the ventilation in there is no longer working. And then if you look to it, the, a large part of the project is to move the electrical up onto the hill into a garage and kind of rehabilitate that building and redesign it so that it can be housed the blowers and electrical equipment out of kind of a low water area. That is absolutely needed. It is unsafe for staff right now if there's any kind of flooding situation. Obviously, electricity and water don't mix, and they've had water up probably 12 to 18 inches on their main power panel down there. So, so yes, the project really is needed. The city's got great grant funding, really exceptional grant funding for the project. So the city's doing this, I think, at the lowest cost possible. And sort of to walk away or not do the project right now would be, you know, it would stay crazy. Because you're not going to get funding like this in the future.
So you said, I think I caught earlier that you said because of having to do the second rebidding, it allowed us the time to get, you said, $750,000 grant?
Yeah. What had happened last fall is, you know, the cities, we're talking to the city about doing the second bid, and contractors were saying bid sooner, probably get better bid numbers if you bid sooner in the fall. So we were encouraging the city to bid in the fall. At the same time, C-Cod was talking to the city, trying to find additional funds and asking, do you want to go after CBG funding? And the city said, yes, let's go after the grant. Well, not knowing that you couldn't bid until the grant was secured. And so there was a lot of good intentions going on, but to go after that grant and then get it, couldn't have that second bid. So.
Did you say approximately 70% of our, of this project could be in grants?
It is in, yeah, in the grants.
And we never could get that again?
No. It's because of the ARPA funding and all the COVID funding that's come through. I know, I mean, I've been working 20 years. I had some grant money like this before come through. And maybe there was some pretty good funding back in 2009 when there was the recession, but not quite this much.
If I may ask a question, could you clarify? You said 24, $24,500 in admin and further observation, $18,300?
$300, yep.
And then you mentioned another?
And the bidding phase amendment portion of the amendment is $17,100.
Oh, okay.
So the total is $59,900.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I will motion to approve contract amendment number two for $59,900 for bidding construction admin, construction observation, sewer fund.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed.
You can leave it there unless you can hear Jaycee.
Thank you, Tanya.
Yep.
We'll move on to number six, one more bar. This is for that street dance, I believe. We had that discussion last meeting. So we will need a motion to approve this special permit. We're going to allow them to have it.
What was she going to check on? Was she going to check on something?
An insurance policy.
Oh. No way that hurt her?
No. I did send her an agenda on Friday to remind her. I think that we don't talk to her. I gotten okay that we need the permit.
So if, I mean, could it come back on the city if we don't know or not? Probably not, because it's. It'd be her license, wouldn't it? So really wouldn't offend us, really?
I imagine we wouldn't be liable for it. But it's very true.
You could make your motion contingent upon.
So I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for July for the one more bar event. Contingent if the insurance system will come.
I will second that motion.
Any other discussion?
Cindy, did you hear that?
Uh, yes, that you motion to approve the special permit. I didn't, did I hear something about insurance?
Contingent that there's insurance.
Okay, great, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. Move on to number seven, Jamie regarding Premier Bank.
Cindy's, Cindy's, she was just on.
So my name is Jamie Schump from Premier Bank, the branch manager down here. And so I just asked just to bring some information regarding what we're considering, what we're going to ask the city to assist us with. So for the past 20 years, I guess we've had a drive-up function on the south side of our bank. As you can see, I gave you just a map of Second and Iowa Street where the Premier Bank is on the left side. And on the south side is our drive-up area, which is covered by the canopy. I guess over the last five years, with technology and banking and along with COVID, we've had more and more people using the drive-up facility and less and less people using our lobby area for their convenience, along with, yeah, left their convenience, maybe even a different group of people that would use that more than the older people. Anyway, to make a long story short, what we're looking at doing is moving our drive-up area to the east side of the bank. We have one person dedicated to the south side of, you know, our drive-up room, which is like a 10 by 12 drive-up room. It's away from all the other functions of the bank, all the transactions, phone calls and everything else that's going on in the bank. And also, our drive-up window was built in 97. Since then, vehicles are getting a little taller, it seems like, and we'd like to be able to raise that drive-up to window just a little bit. A lot of people come in with a pickup this size and the drive-up is down here. And so that's just not working necessarily very good. They have to get out and get around. So I drew this out this afternoon just to, I know there were some concerns that I had regarding this. And one thing that we would be looking at and your assistance with is to vacate the sidewalk area. I don't know if that's the right terminology or not, but basically to put the drive-up on the east side. Represented on this map is maybe a blue line, which could be a probable gutter or border. How that would work, the orange line there on the east side would be the drive-up window itself. Some concerns that I think that might be out there would be the number of parking spots. I counted up the number of parking spots, even as you can see here, within a half block of that corner, there are 95 parking spots, including the six that would be vacated by this project. So there's, I think, plenty of parking, even on this day that Google satellite went over. You can see the amount of empty parking spots within that. That has nothing to do with what's outside of El Cota, the custom coils farther south or farther west towards the health plant. So, but it had to be 89 remaining parking spots, so.
What would you do with the old drive-up?
It would probably just not be used anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. We originally thought about maybe putting a canopy out there, kind of like the one now, but it's just not practical to do that. You know, you'd have two posts out there in the middle of the street that you'd have to deal with snow removal around and about and all that kind of stuff, so. And it's really not necessary. We have about a, I think it's a 30-inch overhang right now on the bank, which would help with water, that type of thing, so.
So how wide is the drive-up, or I should say the road going to be? Would you say 12 foot wide in the concrete? I mean, you're going to vacate the sidewalk and it's just going to be a single path to the drive-up window?
Yes.
And you'd say what, 12 feet wide?
I suppose, yeah. I mean, they'll have to, the engineers will have to blend that in with the city. You know, so that would be basically one, if you want to put it that way.
So are you thinking there would be a sidewalk on the east side of that yet then, or no sidewalk at all?
No. No. I think it'd be a lot more practical. And again, I guess I'll listen to the engineers as they come with something, but I don't anticipate that just for snow removal. Just to have one more curb on both sides would just not be, I don't think, as conducive as having one, so.
Sure. So with that being said, you're going to need some property from the city street, right?
Correct.
Yep. In talking with Jeff Billingsness, that's what he suggested is that we make a parcel out of that and so that it is your property. And the reason being, if there was ever a traffic incident, then it's a difference of if it's on bank property or if it's on the city street.
So assuming, we'll make a big assumption for discussion, if the bank property goes out eight feet from the building now, you're saying Jeff would recommend doing another six feet up the street or something like that?
Whatever is necessary.
I don't know how many feet out it is, the property length.
Correct.
But we really feel like this is going to be a necessity for us to do in order to keep that drive-up window fully staffed at all the time. Just because, just to have one person dedicated to that, some days there's 10 people, sometimes there's 30 people a day that come through the drive-up.
And it's only going to be a single lane?
That's correct.
Not a double?
Will the cash machines still be there then too?
I'm not sure if it's going to stay on the south side or if it would come up here with this.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So inside, what it does for us inside of the bank is we would move our, not that that matters necessarily to the city, but we would move our teller window to the other side of the building. And so the people at our tellers can work on the inside teller windows plus be attending the drive-up area, so.
So in reality, you're going to eliminate one person, right? You could anyway.
Uh, it could be, yeah. Yep. I mean, there's other things they can do, but this person down there just, you know, we used to have them just do checks. And just look at checks and anymore of that's not done necessarily, so. And if I understood, there was a concern about, you know, maybe if we approve this for the bank, we have to approve for other businesses. And I think if you really look at the structure of the other businesses in downtown, other than the bar, which I guess you guys control that, there's really no other businesses that can have a drive-up without covering their front door. Does that make sense? I mean, I'll use it for example, a drugstore, if they had a drive-up in their drugstore or the drugstore, you'd be driving right across the front door of their property to do that, or whatever other business you would be looking at. They'd be doing the same thing. So I don't think that's going to be a risk that necessarily the city has to consider while down the road.
So are you going to leave the main entrance into the bank on the east or are you going to move it on the north corner?
Very likely to either be on the north or maybe at an angle to the northeast. Again, it would be what the engineers report would come back is how far south we need to put the drive-up from an angle of, we have an elevation, we drop a buddy, we have an elevation issue also. And so where does that drive-up go in elevation to make again the window come at the right length, height for the vehicles, so. And I don't know the official process to this, whether we request it, if it's an application process or if the city just does it. I guess I'm not sure of that yet, but.
I guess my concern is, I knew, I had heard this was a possibility, and I drove through several towns and you don't see anybody that has a drive-up on the streets.
I was kind of wondering the same thing. Has this been done anywhere around here that we've seen? Because this just seems kind of weird, cutting up the city sidewalk downtown, taking out parking spots for a drive-up for a business. I'd just like to see an example of this. Plus, my, my kids use that sidewalk about on a daily basis in the summertime, so it sucked to knock out a sidewalk in that part of town.
Just something we may need to look at, you know.
From a standpoint of another town that does that?
No, I just, to kind of weigh your odds.
An example of this being done before. I've never driven by anywhere and seen where you just drive up off the side of the road to pull up to a business. So I'd just like to see an example before we vote on cutting up our sidewalk and stuff.
Do the engineers have any mock-ups yet, what this would look like?
No.
I think this is just a discussion and we'll not make more decisions, so I mean, something to think about.
Yeah, I guess when I approached last week, last spring, or the last fall, I guess when I mentioned it to the city at that point in time, I just tried to, was there any opposition to it? Is there any whatever, you know, we didn't hear anything that we're moving forward. I guess we'll get more information at that point, but it took a long.
I just have, I know the business, the cafe is struggling a bit. And it's kind of senior citizens that really support the cafe. And then there's not that many parking spots in front of there. I mean, not that they can't walk around the corner, but I mean, I mean, it's something I think we got to look at, wheelchair parking or something then to help something on that street.
I did talk to Dan today and he had a problem with it.
He didn't have any problems, then, okay.
He said, see, you don't only think of one person, one of his customers that park over there. Again, I'm not speaking for him.
No, no, but I'm glad to talk to him.
I'm just, that's the information he related to me, so.
He would be my biggest concern as far as.
Probably the dentist office people use it on Thursdays.
Yeah, one day a week, yeah.
And, you know, and they could certainly be up in front of the clinic as far as that goes.
Yeah.
Usually you don't try to, as employees, you don't try to take spots away from businesses that. Any other questions? You guys can.
No, we have good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on to number eight, street updates with Lonnie. Eight-eight is updates, the street budget changes on the discussion as well.
Okay. Lucas and I have been talking a little bit about how we go about road repairs here. And we can chip seal and chip seal and chip seal, and we are never going to win doing it that way. So we kind of started looking at outside the box a little bit. And everything we've seen to asphalt with the contracted company holds up pretty darn good. Problem is, is it's pretty spendy to have the asphalt contractor come and do this. So what we started researching is what would it take to get a machine and a roller that we can run with the amount of people we have? And we came up with a couple options, a couple machines. And to do that, we would kind of reorganize my street budget and not pull any money from any other accounts. It's all within the street budget for this year. And you guys have, I guess you guys out here probably have it too, so. Can see how we kind of rearranged it, or I rearranged it to see what you guys thought about it and what you think about looking at doing this ourselves. It will take, you know, by my figures, which are rough, I mean, you can't guarantee what gas prices are going to be and stuff, but about four blocks worth of contracted paving done, like four blocks. If we did four blocks ourselves, bought the machines, it would be the same money pretty much. So in four blocks, we'd have the machines paid for. And then after that, all the asphalt would be done for probably less than half the price of a contractor. And there, you know, there's a lot of pros don't have it. There's two cons. We're going to have to learn how to run a paver, but I think we can handle it, so. The machines I put on that that you guys have, they're pretty much, you put four switches and it automatically shuts the augers off and on when it needs asphalt or. A guy I talked to, hey, rebuilds those machines, refurbishes them, and he said there's not a whole lot to it, so. But then again, you can go with a lot bigger machine, which is in that paperwork too, the bulldozer, and then things get complicated really quick, so. The little machines are a little more expensive because more people want them. I guess you got any input with this?
Well, with what Lonnie has said, what I'll add to it is I know last year we did a lot of our own patch work, Lonnie did anyway. And we had ground out from the curb out, about four feet out, and Lonnie had hauled it down with, all our own hot mix. And then he rolled it, or I should say he spread it out with the skid loader as best as he could, and then he rolled it. Did it work good? Yeah. Did we get quite a few complaints? We did get a number of complaints. Just because it was not as smooth as, you know, some paver is going to do. With that being said, I think long-term, this is the better way to go. I think our streets are much better than a lot of other small towns. Chip sealing, I don't thi, I mean, chip sealing an existing street that has a good structure, a good foundation to it, I think is wise to maintain it. But we do have streets that are crumbling, and chip sealing is a very small band-aid on that. And so with this being said, if we can go through and lay down two inches of our own asphalt at a time. And so with this being said, if we can go through and lay down two inches of our own asphalt at a time, have it nice and smooth and roll it ourselves, we can do a lot of nice patch work. And have our streets maintained and be better, I think.
Well, that being said, we can put a crown back to some of these that lost their crown.
Correct.
And that's why a lot of these are breaking up because the water's just sitting underneath the road or middle of the road, or it's getting under the edges, which is a whole other deal. But we can, uh, put a lot more strength to our roads with asphalt than chip sealing. And we'll still need the chip seal. Asphalt needs to be covered with chip seal, so...
But I think we need like back drive, you know, that's just chip seal. There's no structure to it.
Same with the Andersons.
Yeah. So I mean, if we did those ourselves, it would not take, I mean, we'd save a lot of money in the long run.
I have a question. What is the projected availability of asphalt? Do you see it staying constant?
I called, uh, Knife River last week and they didn't have any concerns as far as hot mix. They acted like it was just another year, so... Cold mix and that kinda stuff, that's usually the one that they shy away from committing to, so... But the hot mix, it's sound like it's all going. Prices are the same as last year, so...
So like Lonnie had said, made the comment, you know, the smaller pavers are definitely more common. I guess more people want them for the fact that it takes, it does take less manpower to operate them. The bigger the paver, the more it's gonna take to store it also. And something like this does need to sit inside. And I think with the, two of the options of the smaller pavers, the one has an Azuzu engine, the other one's gonna have a Cummins. And that's the difference in the price. I know the Cummins has more hours. But it's with any type of piece of machinery, when people hear Cummins, that's all you need to say. Because they speak for themselves, it's a very good engine. So to spend the money upfront is probably more wiser than to spend less money on a machine that could need more repairs in the near future or break down or not last, quite as...
How would you get it here?
You, this guy that has the two Bomegs will deliver it for fifteen hundred dollars. But they're three hundred fifty-five miles away. So they'll deliver it and then spend two hours with us going through whole machines and showing us what, showing us bottom and how they ground, so... So we wouldn't be just completely blind by it. And this guy who's been doing this stuff for a long time, rolling them. And on top of that, now rebuilding it, so...
So just kinda compared to Stevenson's asphalt. When they came in last year, I think the one checkered hole was over fifty grand. You know, I think if we would've had our own machines, what kind of money we would've saved or we could've got twice as much done. So just something to think about. I think we need to look at doing something like this to just keep our streets out.
Do you have a ballpark figure that you're looking at? Just a...
How many we're gonna, how many like tons we're gonna use?
No, no, just the cost of the machine.
Oh, uh...
Just a ballpark.
Yeah. For one example, on the, okay, this is, we haven't even talked about a roller yet, but, um... Okay, the one machine, Vicki, is thirty-seven thousand nine hundred.
Okay.
And the other Bomeg is thirty-four thousand five hundred.
Okay, thank you.
And then on top of the, you know, with the paver, you got a roller. Uh, we've been renting in the past and that kinda varies. Depends on who we get it from, how long we have it. Usually we get it for a month, so it's in that sixteen hundred range for a month. But then we press everything we do into a month. So once the roller's gone, we're done matching. And if we have a roller here, we can do patchwork on the side too, even without the paver and have smoother patches instead of wheeling them in. And then with wheeling them in, then we track the stuff all over town. And then we go have to sweep it up, so... It's gonna, it'd be a cleaner process. This asphalt, right now, we dump it on the ground or right out of the truck and spread it. We'll dump, if we go this route, we'll dump straight from the truck into the paver. It'll never hit the ground till it's laid, so...
And it does heat it up.
Yep.
As it gets laid out. And of course, you know, this roller that Lonnie has found is a two thousand seventeen. Looking at six hundred fifty-one hours. I think the new one is what, over twenty thousand?
Yep, for a multi-equipped, brand-new on the east and west coast. It's hard to find new stuff around here, it just don't sit around. Yeah, they're in that nineteen to twenty-two range, somewhere in there, so...
And this one's priced at ten-five.
Ten-five, yep.
Yeah.
And this one's up in basically Minneapolis. A lot of the, you know, there's all kinds of brands that make this stuff. I mean, if you're looking at like a Cat, or you're looking for something that size, you're looking at thirty thousand dollars, it's just nuts. But there, there's a Cat name on it. This has a Honda engine in it, so...
Is, um, Menenga, Minnesota, close to the cities?
No, Menenga is northeast of Detroit Lakes.
Would you go get the roller then or Cat would...
I think the roller, we would go get ourselves.
Okay.
Probably have to ask Dale if we can rent this trailer from him to use that. Our big trailer's overkill for that. And that's a long trip for that heavy trailer, so... But the, our trailer also couldn't haul this machine because this machine's too wide for our trailer, so... This thing's pushing width limits where you should probably have over width flagging on your vehicle, so...
And you have to have permits to cross the state line if it's over width as well.
Yeah. And this guy does this all the time, so... He's, it's his business that he does, so... He doesn't deal with just junk either, that's... Not junk, I shouldn't say junk. He shouldn't, he doesn't grab stuff that needs to be refurbished. He sells brand-new stuff too, so he's a legit salesman, so... But something in this size, brand-new is, well, not even brand-new. I've only, but he's got used, a comparable price was eighty-two thousand. And it had like two hundred fifty-one hours on it, so... We're paying half basically.
Yeah, I kinda figured these machines would be more expensive than that. No, I'm all, I'm all for it. It looks like you've, uh, you've definitely done your homework here and got the budget to not change any numbers and still get some asphalt down this summer. Like, I'm for it. I just spent the weekend driving around Sioux Falls and they could use a lot of teams of these. That road sucks. Put it nicely. So yeah, I am, uh, I'm all for it with the, and, uh, I honestly think the price difference is not that much for the bigger one or the little bit better one there, so that's what, that's what I would support, yeah.
And originally I said forty-five for the roller, the paver. I think the cheaper Bomeg puts it over by a couple hundred bucks. Maybe about, maybe twelve hundred. So yeah, the cheaper, the cheaper but older one would put it at forty-six thousand eight hundred approximately. If that's, because I don't know exactly how much gas we'll use to go get the roller if we were to buy that roller. Or whether if we can get Ziegler down, we might be able to get Ziegler down on that price, so... And then we knew our Bomeg comes in at about fifty-eight thousand two hundred. So we would have to adjust that budget for whichever one we were aiming at. We don't really have an approval on there to buy a piece tonight, so...
The one for thirty-four thousand five hundred has eighteen sixty-four hours. And the old nine that has the Cummins is gonna have three thousand forty-four hours. And with that being said, it has more hours, but it has the Cummins and that's why it's more money. It's kinda gonna have a little bit more power and longevity of the engine. It's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be a lot better.
Do they guarantee any of this for a little while?
Uh, probably not.
Probably not.
Used equipment's usually as-is.
As-is, so...
Well, if the guy's gonna come down and show you for a couple hours how to run the thing, then maybe he'll, he'll at least work once, watch around it. Get two hours on it, yeah.
Probably if we go this way, it'll be a little cold yet, but...
Well, if there's no other discussion on it, I guess we'll need a motion to approve the street budget changes.
I make a motion to approve the street budget changes as discussed.
Are we gonna have a price in there though, to that fifty thousand?
I would add to the city's motion to say, um, to purchase the, um, the pieces that you wanna get. And then put the price in there.
Do you wanna talk to the guy?
To Lucas.
Yeah.
Does Lonnie's done a go over there?
She wanna make a motion to buy, changes to buy. Cindy, Lucas here, how are you?
I'm good.
So, good, good. So we're gonna make a motion to approve the street budget changes with, um, I would say with the contingent of the machines checking out to buy the ones we want.
Okay.
Is that, is that, that's how I would state it?
Okay, with contingent to what?
The machines checking out and it's what we want.
So are you looking at the thirty-seven nine for the A fourteen?
I would, that's what my opinion is.
And then the ten-five for the roller?
Yeah.
And, okay, so a motion to approve street budget changes with contingency to machines checking out and being available.
Yeah. Buying paver and roller.
Paver and roller?
Yeah.
And forty-eight four hundred?
Forty-eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Forty-eight thousand...
Four hundred.
Four hundred, okay.
Plus delivery, whatever that is.
And that's not the deli, you know, the delivery, so that'll have to be added on top. We don't know what that's gonna be for sure, you know?
Okay.
It should be around fifteen hundred, but I can't say.
Okay, so just make it at forty-eight thousand four hundred?
Yeah.
Plus, plus delivery piece?
Correct.
All right. All right, I will make a motion to approve the street budget changes with contingent to, jency, to machines checking out and paver and roller for forty-eight thousand four hundred with a delivery cost.
Correct.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. Thank you, Cindy. We'll move on to number nine, public input. Rich Ackman wants to talk.
Thank you. Yeltsin Pickleball Players Association and our forty-three members are gonna host a tournament on Saturday, April first. Over here at the gym, we're gonna start after lunch with our preliminary rounds and our semifinal rounds. And then we'll wind up that portion of it about four-thirty or five. And we'll go to the event center for something to eat and a live auction to benefit the golf course. Several items have already been donated and we're looking for more. I have an auctioneer. The school is gonna bring their golf coach and some players from the golf team to help with the live auction. And we include that, we'll come back there for the finals of the pickleball in three, three categories, men's doubles, women's doubles, and mixed doubles. The gate for both sessions will be by volunteer donations in a can or something. That'll go to the golf course. So the live auction and the gate will go to the golf course. The Pickleball Association will keep that ten dollar per person entry fee into the tournament from those teams. Any questions?
Sounds great. Appreciate it.
We've got some nice gifts that are being donated and we're looking for more. We'll work with the Chamber of Commerce on more of this and we'll do some advertising and we'll just see how it goes. We had one practice tournament that went alright, but double elimination. So if you get some long matches, it could get pushed. And we'll try to work that through and see how it goes.
What time did you say you were playing and starting this?
It'll be noon or a little after. We got three divisions to fit into about five hours.
Okay.
London and I are gonna work out the food situation over at the grill. So that, that's gonna be coming. There'll be some, we'll handle that somehow. I think that's all.
Sounds great.
Great. Yep, thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
I have some public input. Uh, last week, Darla and I were presenting towards the city, but this is to the, um, community center. Jared Juwaka presented this to me. It is the third installment of twenty-five thousand. They donated a hundred thousand dollars, so this is the third installment. There is one more coming next January. So it is a donation from the Yeltsin Foundation. So I just wanted to say thank you on that behalf. And, uh, we're always looking for more, you know, more if possible. And that's all I have.
Okay, I have public input. Thank you. Okay, um, I do want to address a couple things. First, the possibility of a conflict of interest when, um, Austin Feltz was doing work or appeared to be doing work for Mike Burke. We wanna watch out for that, okay? I've had people come to me and ask me questions about Quorum. I've told them what has been mentioned by the lawyers. I'm still getting some pushback that, on the Quorum issue. Going on to what you're going to be dealing with tonight as to the lot by the, um, Farmers Co-op Society. Going to point out that part that they're, um, looking for. First of all, um, that they took civil action against the city and roads. Why wasn't that announced at some point? That they did a court civil action naming the city and stuff. When I was looking into what they were talking about, I found this court case. And I do have a copy of the proceedings, forty-three pages of it. They appear to have gone back to, um, put a foundation under what they were asking the city to do. Now, they're, they're asking for planning and zoning... Now, they're, they're asking for planning and zoning and it's not, that portion is not in the city limits. And I've given you some documents, I did not know that you were gonna have a document like this, um, showing, showing the, um, city, um, boundary lines. That ditch that they refer to is a waterway. And in the South Dakota LRC eleven dash two, water rights. In South Dakota, all water is the property of the people and the right to use that water is through permission. We have water rights. As it is right now, water comes down that. It's not necessarily a navigable river, it's called, it's referred to as a stream or a creek. Um, it is not a navigable river because you have to have so much water to literally float a boat, um, for so many months in a year. Now, the thing with this is while there isn't much water in that ditch now, I have photographs of when there was a whole bunch and a tree went down and blocked the water. It flooded our building, um, and it went, it got, the flood got as far as, um, total stop. At, at present, there is a blockage. I have not walked because it would be walking on private property, um, but there is a pathway. You can see it on the, um, photographs here, um, just below the left corner of the outside blue line that marks the property that they're looking at. You see that white, that, that area where they were storing grain? Just north of that, there's a road there and they put it across, they put across, but they put it across and appears to have blocked off or dammed up that waterway. There are two huge culverts on the corner of Iowa and south and that, those take that water, but if you've got something blocking it, it's gonna back it up. It's going to have three houses, um, Rhodes, Mr. McCullough, and the shop that we own. And there is a lot of water that can come through there. And when you back it up, then it's gonna go all the way back and it could possibly make it as far as your house, Lucas, that it, 'cause it comes through, you can just barely see where that creek traverses. The city of Elsister is also running, um, storm water down Lee Drive and it goes out into that same area. So, just so you know, and I have walked that course and it was back when the chip seal was being washed, washed down and it was washed into the storm drains, plugged up the storm drains and it was flushing rock out to, into Mr. Lynn's, um, agricultural property. Um, the, I, the copy I had is a September nineteen fifty-eight survey by Edward Mather. His South Dakota license is zero, 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 three. He was out of Mitchell. He did the survey. Now, I see that, um, a Lawrenson surveyed Beersford, but what I was getting out of the information that was given him, some changes, that it's being referred to as a ditch instead of a waterway. And I don't, unless, you know, I, I don't think the city should be approving something like this.
Eh.
Was that a commentary? I'm sorry, I shouldn't have. But that's my opinion. I've, I've done the research, I've read through, I've read through the briefs and stuff and looked at some of the exhibits, but they go back a ways. Um, we also have an issue with FCS. They are in the city limits now and guess what? They gotta abide by, um, some of the restrictions that we have on, uh, not necessarily property maintenance, but if they're putting affluent into the air and that kinda thing, they're subject to city censure on that and city fines. So they need to be, they need to be aware that now they're in the city limits and complaints could be filed. And again, um, there is a thing in, um, I do have a couple books. One is, um, storm, drainage, drainage things and what you do upstream, if it adversely affects homes, properties downstream, and if you divert water or you, um, stop it, dam it up and create damage downstreams, you are liable. Now, the city wouldn't be, but it's something you need to pay attention to and most people don't know this. And like I said, I've already seen one road that was created that wasn't there when I did the walk about a couple years ago. And so my concern is that they're gonna cover that quote-unquote ditch up and I'm gonna have water and I, while I have paddles, I don't wanna be up that creek. And I'm not Noah and the animals have not been coming in two by two. So, this is what I'm, 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 I, I think that more stuff needs to be investigated and, um, like I said, this is, this is not a ditch that they can fill in and cover up. It's, it is a waterway. And I thought one time somebody had said it feeds into Rui Creek. Now, I can't verify that for sure, um, but anything that was going into that creek that could affect the, the, an endangered, um, marine species, uh, had to be watched out, had to be, um, taken care of, it couldn't, it couldn't go down that drain. So, that's what I'm getting at and, um, so I'm just giving you guys the heads up and like I said, I would, I would have preferred, um, if there was a contract out for that or, or not a contract, I'm sorry, I misspoke, a lawsuit, albeit civil. I think that the people of Elsister had, had a right to know about what was going on, why this, this company was coming after the city to force, to force an issue. Okay? Thank you.
Any other public input? Go ahead.
Yes, as proprietors of the local bar, you are the owners, um, I've had probably a half a dozen people talk to me and I've talked to them about the bar never being open. Uh, they don't know the hours. Um, they're wondering what's going on. So I would just encourage you to encourage whoever the, uh, the C's to, you know, post up some hours and, and be there. It seems like it's a problem.
Sure. Anything else? Thank you. Um, with that being said, he brought up the bar and, uh, it was something that I should've said when I had public input, but on the city's behalf, we do need to have the basement cleaned out and, uh, some of the mold issues need to be addressed, if it's with N-Tech or whoever it is. But, uh, on our behalf, if we keep, continue to lease it out, to sell the bar, we need to, we need to do what's right and get it cleaned. That's my opinion. Um, so that's all I have on the bar and, uh, I do have a complaint. Uh, there is a, um, a party that lives on Broad Street that has a very large pig and they feel that, uh, the pig does not, you know, should not be allowed down, so that's all I have. Any other public input? Otherwise, we're gonna move on. That being said, number ten, golf course, ten A is vacancy discussion. This is, uh, the position that Landon resigned from.
So the topic of discussion is, do you open it up, um, and advertise and if we do, is it a part-time position seasonal or is it a full-time position with working, um, offseason to help with snow removal, street department, um, Wendell does officially retire, but we're in the wastewater plant and offer some help with money on that, so it's not a commitment every weekend. I did talk to Dave Larson to see if he would be interested, um, in how many hours he would like to work up at the golf course this summer. He would prefer just to be the man that does the odd stuff, um, whether it's mower repair, changing of the oil, um, maybe some sprinkler work if maybe or anything like that. He'd prefer not to work a lot of hours, but he'll be available to help out.
I guess my biggest concern is budget issues up there and I don't know if you can afford another position right now, full, a full-time position. That's what I'm a little.
I agree with you.
Reluctant on. I mean, I, this is nothing cut in stone. I haven't talked to him. I heard maybe Jimmy would be able to help a little bit and there was some talk of another person maybe helping, talking to the golf course itself, the golf club and they said, some said there might be some volunteers that would help with the cleanup and, I mean, it's all maybe.
We would have to ask, um, our mower people if they'd consider coming out in white greens. That is the big thing.
We don't have to do anything. We don't have to make a decision. It's on there if we wish to, but, uh, we do not have to.
Maybe talk to the mower guys. I, I, I honestly asked Landon, would you possibly do it one more year? And he said, no, we can't, but, it's all that.
Well, would you like to table?
Yeah, let's table it, look into it a little bit more maybe. I, I don't know when the golf meeting is, isn't that coming up? It's March or April?
I would assume, 'cause legal start for.
Yeah, April usually, yeah.
Well, no other discussion on that, I don't believe? Um, we do not need number eleven, so we'll move on to number twelve, waterman bill approval.
I apologize I didn't get you pictures. I, I will, um, email the pictures out, but the flooring did get done and it looks really beautiful and it was both men's and women's bathrooms. Once the toilets were out, waterman was called in because we were having a plumbing issue and, um, we found that there was some chunk of lead in the pipes and so those were repaired. Uh, the shut-off valves were leaking and new shut-off valves were installed and the flanges were replaced. Um, I guess the women's restroom didn't have a flange at all, but the men's did, but now if they do and they have new shut-offs, new flanges, um, and waterman seated in the toilets after the flooring was installed. So, that was a bill that I was not anticipating and the bill for that was one thousand two hundred forty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Pat, may I add to that a little bit?
Certainly.
Um, I was down there with Dan when he was doing it last time and that piece of lead that he pulled back, he tried to go back in and recut more of it and wasn't able to. Um, it's just, it's an old lead joint, like they used to do things. If we have this problem again, we're probably gonna have to cut the floor down there and replace that joint with PVC, 'cause there is still some lead in there, but hopefully we don't have this problem again and that piece that he got out was the problem, but just to be aware, there is still some lead sticking out in those joints, but his cutter wasn't able to cut them, so. That's, I, that's all I, I just wanted you guys to be aware of that part too, so.
Thank you.
And just roughly, I think he said, if we would decide to fix it right, it would be like fifteen hundred dollars?
He never gave me a price on that.
I'm gonna say that would be on a high end.
We'd have to remove that bathroom that's down there, if it's under that, which is useless anyways.
So on twelve A, we'll need a motion to approve paying waterman backhoe for one thousand two hundred and forty dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh, restroom repair liquor store and it's been filed with the general fund.
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to approve paying waterman backhoe one thousand two hundred and forty dollars and eighty-two cents for restroom repair of the liquor store out of the general fund.
I was thinking it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed and we'll move on to number fourteen, flat approval. This is what we were talking about earlier, or Vicki was anyway. So, flat, flat of, of lots one and two, south addition, addition in the southeast quarter of the section twenty-eight, um, I think it's current ninety-five, north fifth, PM, city of Elsister, Union County, South Dakota. So we'll need a motion to convey jointly as the planning commission and city council.
So has the lawyer looked at this? I mean, are we comfortable to do this when they're not here?
Um, I talked to Chris Lawrenson after our last council meeting and I will tell you what he told me.
And who's he?
He's the gentleman who did the survey work.
Okay.
So, what the elevator is doing is they have, um, they would like to put a large culvert in and then have the ability for trucks to circle the bits. So there would be a large culvert placed over the waterway. They would, um, this parcel was not owned by anyone. It, it was, um, if South Street would have continued, it would have been a street, but it did not continue, so. Um, and so it was agreed upon to split the, the tract. And I did talk to, um, Chris and he's the, 'cause I told him, I said, I'm not sure why the city has to approve this because it's not in city limits. And Chris was talking with, um, Hen, Henji, the planning and zoning for Union County.
Be Dennis.
And, um, Dennis was aware of that and Chris was aware of that, but there is the north ditch, part of that is in city limits. And so it was recommended that the county sign off on it as well as the city sign off on it.
So did the county sign off on it?
They have already, yes. Uh, no, sorry, they have not. They do it after us. The elevator has signed on it and Chris has signed off on it.
Well, in my opinion, if it does restrict any water flow, it will flood my crop ground.
Yeah.
Because my crops are just to the east of that, I would say, I don't, half mile to the east, just on the east side of Highway eleven. But I'm, I, I don't have any idea how long the culvert is gonna be.
Right, we don't know yet.
If I can make a comment, the culverts are in on the curve. There's two of them. They're concrete and if I remember correctly, um, uh, the, uh, gentleman from Elk Point, he's no longer there, but, um, I think those.
Ray Rago?
Yes, Ray Rago. Um, I shouldn't have forgotten that, 'cause that's my grandmother's name. Um, but anyhow, those are very expensive culverts and those culverts aren't very, they, they aren't very wide and to, to redo those would be probably anywhere from a hundred to two hundred grand now. And the length of it that I'm concerned about is because, like I said, um, did you get something that goes down, but if you have an over length, they're not gonna wanna put in a great big culvert. They're not gonna, and, and like I said, it will, it will flood. And I have pictures of our shop when it flooded that time and that was just with a tree going down.
So I will add to Vicki's comment. I don't know if they're both concrete, the one is steel.
Oh, okay. I stand corrected. Oh, okay. I stand corrected.
Bill Boyer bought this elevator many years ago. I would say probably close to 20 years ago for sure. And in the middle of that road, one of those culverts had collapsed. And so Bill had talked with the county about replacing that culvert and they were against it. And they said, you know, as of right now, we don't want to replace it because of the cost. So Bill says, how about I dig it up with my machine and I fix it, you guys pay for some of the material. And so what they did is they put a Band-Aid on it. And what Bill told me is on top, if you walk inside that culvert and you look up on top, there's a big patch, a steel plate that they put on both sides of it and kind of sandwiched it together and they covered it up. That culvert needs to be replaced and they haven't done it. Bill don't think they're gonna do it anytime soon. And that's, that's what Bill had stated to me.
And that'd be the elevators, right?
That's.
Responsibility or.
That'd be township.
County and township, I believe.
The township, or, sorry, the culvert that I believe they're looking to install is the area where Vicki is talking about.
Yep, it's correct.
That's where the FCS would put in a new culvert. If a new culvert is necessary on the curve, that's township. That's not us. It's township.
But, and I will say, there's trucks at many times of the year. We've got semis going through on that little gravel road, South Street. One every, every five seconds.
I think I remember when it flooded and it was a mess. It was way across the highway 11.
Yep, yep, it came across Highway 11, came in the east door of the building and washed everything out the north door of our building. It came up about four feet.
And that was an unusual situation. That was a Memorial Day Monday and we had eight inches of rain in one day.
Yeah, right. But I worry, we got a lot of snow around here too.
But, but to put in, and like I said, a long culvert, you're just asking for trouble. And if they put in, like you said, if they put in steel or whatever.
I mean, it seems like a minute problem, but it really could be a big problem. That's what I worry about. I mean, because there's so many entities involved. That's what scares me. Township, county, us, and the elevator, right?
Ultimately, what the long-term plan is for SES is if this gets dated, I mean, they've already purchased it. It's already in their name. They're just plating it. And eventually they are going to clean up all of their parcels because they have a lot of little parcels and they're gonna refit it one more time when this is done to be one parcel.
But that addition needs to be, that they want to bring in, needs to be annexed. It needs to be annexed in and that hasn't happened yet, as far as I understand.
So I don't, they might want to purchase it, but they can't purchase it until the plat is approved.
If you look at Beacon Snyder, it is theirs. And that's that map I gave you.
The Beacon Snyder shows conditional. It's based on a conditional. That's what I've got from Beacon Snyder. But like I said, which comes first, you have, before you can plat it, you have to annex that parcel in. And then you, then you plat it, as I understand it.
So who has to annex it? Us? We don't.
We, they would have to, they'd have to apply, apply and we'd have to annex it in. The city.
But right now, the parcel is county. Because if you look at the parcel ID, it starts with a 10 and that signifies county. We are 01. Do you want to wait and have Sam or Austin review this?
I, I would feel better than that because I just want, I know waterways can be very touchy. And I don't want people's houses being flooded either. Let's have them look at it.
Did you hear any of that Cindy? Well, Kyle, any input or?
No. I agree. We probably have lawyers look through it, just make sure we're covered on all things like you guys are talking with the waterway there.
Because I know there used to be a big crit and it went all the way down that. And it usually, it used to have a lot of water.
Yes. It, when it, I've seen it when it's, it's cooking.
Yeah.
But also this first part of it here, this isn't, like, is this saying anything about giving them the property or just like everything that would be involved from us? Or is there like a next step after approving these plats?
Then what happens is the plat, what you're doing is approving, and then these go down to Union County and they go through the same process with the commissioners. And then it becomes an updated plat map.
So do they know anything about this, the commissioners at this point?
I don't know if Dennis has talked to them about it, to be perfectly honest.
I can visit Dennis too like that.
Yeah.
I had a meeting with him this morning, so.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Otherwise we'll move on, so we will not need 14A through E. So we'll move on to number 15, which is finance office updates.
Just letting you guys know, I did purchase tickets for you to attend the district meeting. We have a district meeting. It is in El Sister at the community center, March 16th at 6 o'clock. What the district meeting is, is a time to meet with South Dakota Municipal League and they will tell us everything that happened in legislation and how that will affect anything with the cities. So social, or the meeting starts, social hours from 5 to 6. Our social hour is at 6, dinner's at 7, the program's at 8, and it'll be done by 9. So. Abigail still needs to have her performance review done. And then I really would like to have you guys schedule some time and even if we need to do it in evening hours or whatever, but we do need to do those monthly spot checks so that they are done prior to the auditors coming, which I'm sure they'll come and you will remain.
So 15D is 2022 annual report. I have motions approved in 2022 annual report. And that is.
Yeah, there's a lot of parts to it. So in your, in your packet, there's three parts to it. The first part is what will be published in the paper after you guys approve it. It is an overall summary of what happened in 2022 with respect to the city and all of the funds that we have. So that's a summary, which like I said, gets published. The next part of the annual report that you have is, it's got the green and white stripes and it's this way. This is all of our city assets. This is a depreciation schedule. And it's broken down by fund, so you have the sewer assets, the water assets, and then all the general fund assets as well. So I just gave you that in case you want to look over it, just so you can kind of get a feel for the things that we track. It used to be that we would put assets on there that were over 1,000, but anymore the mark is 5,000. So any asset that's 5,000 or greater gets put on to the asset list. Anything less than 5,000 is expense in the year of purchase. So the next part of the annual report is the part that is portrait style and it looks like this. I'll just kind of go over. Once you are familiar looking at our audit, this is the same layout as the audit. And so that's why it kind of falls in it. If you guys want to put it in with your 2022 budget and then when the audit comes out, you can compare and see how close we are. Page one is an overall summary of all of the balances as of December 31st. So we break it down by bank balances, fund balances, what we have outstanding in bonds and revolving loan, which are loans that are owed to the city. Page two is what they call a statement of net position. And basically that is a snapshot of our network as of December 31st. And so it breaks just the two columns. Governmental activities are all the general fund items. Business-type activities are our core enterprise funds. And so again, it's a summary. It just tells you what we have in the bank, what we have for assets, what we have for liabilities, and then our net position accounts. Page three is the general fund revenues. And it's broken down by, is it a government fund, a public safety fund, culture and rec? Is it grants, services that we charge for? And then just basic general revenues, which is where the property taxes, sales taxes, money we get from the county, that kind of stuff. So it just breaks down the revenue part of it. Page four is what they call a statement of activities. This one is a little bit tricky to read because normally we always do revenues first and then expenses. This one goes vice versa, so it lists all of the expenses by the different categories. And then the second column would be your revenues by the categories. And then if we had any grants or capital contributions. And then the tax items are listed down below. Pages five and six are balance sheets for the governmental funds. And again, it's broken down by the different funds that we have. So general fund, revolving loan fund, Second Penny, community center, and library. The community center fund here is the construction account. It is not the operating account for the golf course. So that's the balance sheet for pages five and six. Page seven, eight, and nine is the income statement for your governmental funds. So these are all the revenues and expenses for those five mission funds. Pages 10, 11, and 12 is what they call a statement of net position for the enterprise funds. So that's for your water, sewer, solid waste, and golf course. So there again. Pages 13, 14, and 15 is our budget, what we originally budgeted. The, if we made any transfers in, or the supplemental budgets at the end of the year. And then you compare that to your actual amount and then it provides the variance. And again, that's for general fund items. Page 16 is the income statement for the enterprise funds. So income statement will have your revenue, expenses, and then your special items. Page 17 is a summary of our long-term debt. It's broken out by governmental debt, enterprise fund debt. Down below, I list all of the different types of bonds and with their mature date and interest rate. And then at the very bottom, just gives you an idea of what our beginning principal was, the amount of principal paid during the year and ending balance. And page 18 is a cash flow. What was our uses of cash and what was, where did we get our funding for the cash? So this format is the exact same format that the auditors use. And like I said, I would encourage you to keep this. And then when we do get our audit next year or later this year, compare this with the audit. So it should be very, pretty similar. That is the annual report. This is, after your approval, this is submitted to the legislative aisle for the state.
I will motion to approve the 2022 annual report.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. We'll move on to 15E, which is board of equalization meeting. I have a motion to set board of equalization meeting Monday, March 20th, 2023, 6 PM.
I'll make a motion to set the board of equalization meeting for Monday, March 20th, 2023 at 6 PM.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, what is a board of equalization meeting?
The board of equalization is an opportunity, there's two things that happen at this. I'm going to be sending you out in your, in an email form so that you can look at houses in and around your ward, that you look at their equalized value, which is the assessed value from Union County, and see if they look in line to you. So you might look at parcels to say, wow, this says it has a shed on there, but the shed's not there anymore. Or it could be that you look at the values and see if they, if they feel, if you feel like that is at least 85% of what the property would be worth, or the shed or the housing structure would be worth. Then the other aspect of the meeting is if any citizens in El Sister received their equalization papers from the Union County and they were not happy with the amount that they were assessed, that is an opportunity for them to come to you, to the council, and say, I don't believe this is right and the reason why is this. And so that's why it's good for you guys.
They might get a whole bunch this time.
That's why it's good for you guys to look at this ahead of time to kind of have an idea of what the values are. So.
Okay.
But the deadline, we will know on the 16th at 5 o'clock if we are going to have any people that.
Probably will have the form in by then.
Right.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion by Darla, a second by Cindy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. We move on to reminders and updates. Bid opening opens March 9th, 2023. Then we go to daylight savings time, March 12th, 2023. And then of course, we talked about that District Three meeting at the community center, March 16th, 2023 at 6 PM. And then the board of equalization meeting, March 20th, 2023 at 6 PM. The deadline to appeal is March 16th at 5 PM. And then we have the city council meeting, March 20th, 2023 at 6 PM. With that being said, we'll move on to number 16, executive session if needed. That being said, we'll move on to number 17. That being said, we'll move on to number 17 and that is to adjourn the meeting. So I'll, I'll need a motion to adjourn the council.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Darla made a motion, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has passed. We are out. We adjourned at 7:31 PM. Thank you.